And I thank you for attending the Twinsburg Board of Education Regular Board Meeting for Wednesday, February 21st, 2018. I called the meeting to order at 7:02. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Solera, here. Mr. Curtis?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Here.
Mr. Felber?
Here.
If you could please stand with me and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great mother for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and thank you for coming. I would like to begin this evening by extending my heartfelt sympathy to those affected by the horrific events of Parkland, Florida last week. Our schools are meant to welcome our children and help guide them on their path in life. There should never be a place where tears are shed, where students, teachers, and staff put themselves in harm's way to save others, and where far too often in recent years, lives are lost. To that end, please understand that our ultimate priority here is to provide a safe and secure learning environment for all of our students, staff, and visitors. Over the past few years, this district has enhanced many of its security procedures and protocols in order to maintain the safety and security. While the district continues to evaluate our procedures and protocols, as with anything we do, we need the help and support of the community to succeed. As Superintendent Powers iterated in her Blackboard Connect email, we encourage everyone to be aware and vigilant, adopting the motto, "See something, say something." Our anonymous Twinsburg City Schools Safe School tip line is available 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, at 330-486-CALL. And all calls are referred to school authorities and, when necessary, local law enforcement. As you will see shortly, we have a lot to celebrate this evening regarding Dodge Intermediate School, but I'm not here to steal Superintendent's powers as thunder. I do want to highlight, however, some of the other amazing achievements over the past few weeks from our students. I continue to be amazed at the amount of talent over such a broad spectrum of activities that our students possess. Laura Hoyle, a student at RBC, finished in the top seven of the Summit County Spelling Bee and will be moving on to the district competition. We also had three RBC students advance to the state competition in the Math Counts Competition. Of particular interest to me, as my daughter is on the team, was a great finish to the season that the seventh grade girls' basketball team had, culminating in the Suburban League Tournament Championship. The boys' team was also successful, as they finished as the runners-up in their league tournament. Four RBC band members were also selected out of a pool of over 900 students to perform in the 2018 Ohio State Middle School Honor Band. As well as our talented RBC singers didn't disappoint with a first runner-up at the Midwest, Medina Midwest Showcase. Not to be outdone by the middle school, our high school students have also amassed multiple accomplishments these past few weeks. Our Great Expectations show choir took home a grand champion award from DeKalb, Indiana. Hockey player Ryan DeRosa was selected to the first-team All-League in the Greater Cleveland Hockey High School League and will be playing in their All-Star Game on March 4th at Quicken Loans. Bowler Caleb East won the sectional tournament with a series score of 748 and will be advancing to the districts, along with Tyanna Elder, who placed second in the girls' sectional tournament. While recorded last November, our academic challenge team comprised of Dominic Gordon, Ian Chenkis, and Nitya Castebalta relived their successful win with the public airing of their competition on February 10th, once again amazing everyone with their vast knowledge. Recently, our six national merit semifinalists, Jared Bray, Justin Clement, Nitya Castebalta, Nathan Molino, Jeremy Nemec, and Daniel Pittler, have all learned that they have advanced to the status of finalists. Lucas Fisher, an artist at the high school, was awarded a blue ribbon at last week's Cleveland Clinic Expressions Art Contest. Our swim team wrapped up a successful season by sending 15 individuals to districts this past weekend. That's a school record. Coming out of districts last weekend, diver Brad Yates advanced to states. He's the first male diver in our district to advance to states in 16 years. And swimmer Colin Martin also advanced to states in the 100 Fly, the first swimmer to advance to the states in eight years from our district. These accomplishments are just a sampling of the great things our students are doing, and I truly apologize if I've missed anything. I couldn't be more proud of our students and all those staff and family members who helped them reach such great heights. It truly shows what a tremendous job everyone in this district is doing and how we all come together as a community. So with that, I will turn the meeting over to Superintendent Powers for your report.
Thank you, Mr. Solera. Good evening, everyone. We are excited tonight because we are celebrating George G. Dodge Intermediate School. I'm going to move to the podium this evening, if that's okay, Mr. Solera, as we have a lot to announce tonight. Board of Education, the Twinsburg City School District is proud to announce that George G. Dodge Intermediate School has been designated as an Ohio School to Watch and is a National Forum School to Watch by the Ohio Department of Education. The Ohio Schools to Watch program seeks to recognize high-performing, growth-oriented public middle schools, or middle-grade schools, to demonstrate what all middle-grade level schools are capable of achieving. And those things are academic excellence, developmental responsiveness, social equity, and organizational structures and processes that support our students and our staff. The Ohio Schools to Watch program is sponsored by the Ohio Department of Education, the Ohio Middle Level Association, the Ohio Federation of Teachers, and Otterbyne University. On December 19th, 2017, George G. Dodge Intermediate School received a site visit as part of the Ohio Schools to Watch application process. In a letter written by Dan Stacy of the Ohio Department of Education, it was stated, "The visitation is to establish that what is written is actually what is occurring in the school. The visiting team had the privilege of exploring your school, visiting with students, teachers, and parents. It was gratifying to be able to see everything your team had written in your application in place in your school. The designation of Dodge Intermediate School recognizes the continued dedication of your staff and leadership. This designation is about Dodge Intermediate School's staff and leaders' dedication to providing students with the best education possible. You all work very hard, and it pays off in the success of your students." I wish to commend George G. Dodge Intermediate School administrators, Mr. Reggie Holland. Would you please come forward, Reggie? Assistant Principal, Mrs. Iwanda Huggins. And Assistant Principal, Julianne Walker. At this part of the presentation, if we have any staff members, teachers, support staff from George G. Dodge Intermediate School, please join our administrators up front. So great to see everyone this evening. The designations of Ohio School to Watch and National Forum School to Watch are acknowledgements of the dedication and support of our staff and families to ensure our students are provided with the very best educational opportunities that are possible. I am so very proud of all of you, and I thank you for your dedicated service to our boys and girls at George G. Dodge Intermediate School. Not only am I tiger proud of our Dodge family tonight and every night, so many other people are here tonight to celebrate you as well. Tonight, I'm delighted to introduce a number of very special people who are guests here who have come this evening to congratulate you in a very special way. So first, I'd like to ask Nick Siafani, who is the Legislative aide to Congressman David Joyce, to please come forward.
Thank you very much for this great honor. I wanted to present two things, proclamations. The first one is from the United States House of Representatives. It's a certificate of congressional recognition and achievement presented to the George G. Dodge Intermediate School, Twinsburg, Ohio, in recognition of being designated as an Ohio School to Watch and a National Forum School to Watch by the Ohio Department of Education. Congratulations on that. And then also, we wanted to do something, I will pass these out, we wanted to do something in addition to the proclamation, and so we put something into the Congressional Record, which is essentially the minutes of Congress, day by day. And this just went in on Friday, so I just printed out some copies, but I wanted to read this, and this is, will be in the Congressional Record forever. "Mr. Joyce of Ohio, Mr. Speaker, I would like to acknowledge an exceptional school in my district, the George G. Dodge Intermediate School in Twinsburg, which has been recognized by the Ohio Department of Education as an Ohio School to Watch and a National Forum School. An Ohio School to Watch is a school that exceeds in academic excellence, developmental responsiveness, social equity, and organizational structures and processes. Students who attend the George G. Dodge Intermediate School get one of the best hands-on educational experiences in the nation. The teachers and administrators do go above and beyond their normal duties to educate and influence young minds to succeed academically, socially, and in their future professions. There is no greater cause than educating the minds of the future. As a father, I know the amount of trust parents put into the hands of our educators. Knowing our school districts are exceeding in the efforts for our children to succeed creates a closer, more positive community for the students, parents, and all involved in the surrounding neighborhoods. George G. Dodge Intermediate School's mission is to create an environment of pride for one's education while engaging with parents, administration, and fellow students to grow in civic engagement and extracurricular activities. This recognition is all due to the hard work by the George G. Dodge Intermediate School Principal Reggie Holland, his staff, Twinsburg City School Superintendent Kathy Powers, and Twinsburg City School District Board members, Matt Solera, Rob Felber, Mark Curtis, Tina Davis, and Angela DeFabio. The dedication and leadership of these men and women is remarkable and unmatched. I am truly proud to have such a great educational system in Ohio's 14th District and congratulate George G. Dodge Intermediate School on this well-deserved distinction. Congratulations to all of you."
Thank you, Mr. Siafani. We are sincerely touched by your kindness in the battle of Congressman Joyce as well. Please take back our thanks to him, too. Next, I'd like to ask Representative, Mrs. Christina Rohner, to please come forward from the Ohio House of Representatives.
Hi, good evening. Congratulations. I am Christina Rohner. I'm your state representative. And tonight, I am here to congratulate you, to recognize you for this tremendous accomplishment. It is a very, very competitive distinction that you have earned, and it's a reason to be very proud. So I have today a commendation signed by me and the Speaker of the House, which says, "On behalf of the members of the Ohio House of Representatives of the 132nd General Assembly, we are pleased to congratulate George G. Dodge Intermediate School on being recognized as an Ohio School to Watch and as a National Forum School to Watch by the Ohio Department of Education. Selection for these prestigious distinctions is an honor of which everyone associated with the George G. Dodge Intermediate School can be proud. For each member of the staff has shown tremendous dedication to helping students achieve their full potential. The combination of school management, student development, personnel programs, and the community input contributed to the school receiving these honors, and it will serve as a model for other schools, districts, and communities throughout the state. George G. Dodge Intermediate School has established a solid foundation of superior programs on which it can build an even more rewarding and productive future. With energy and enthusiasm, the school's faculty and administration, including its principal, Reggie Holland, have worked to develop and implement a comprehensive and innovative curriculum, and they are deserving of high praise for their unwavering efforts. Thus, it is with sincere pride that we commend George G. Dodge Intermediate School on its success and salute its staff and students as some of Ohio's finest citizens. Tonight, I'm going to say that Ohio is tiger proud.
Thank you, Representative Berger, and thank you for always being such a supporter of our school district. We sincerely appreciate you. Next, I'd like to ask Mr. Matt Solera to come forward and read the proclamation from
Good evening. This is from the General Assembly of the State of Ohio, the Ohio Senate, honoring George G. Dodge Intermediate School on its remarkable achievement. "On behalf of the members of the Senate of the 132nd General Assembly of Ohio, we are pleased to extend special recognition to George G. Dodge Intermediate School on being named a National Forum School to Watch and Ohio School to Watch by the Ohio Department of Education. George G. Dodge Intermediate School is deserving of commendation for the exemplary efforts it has displayed in exceeding the highest standards of educational excellence. This fine institution received these accolades for its work in teaching Ohio's youth to better our state's future, and we are certain that it will continue to display the same unwavering dedication to scholastic eminence for which it has become known. Education is vital to our nation's continued economic and social well-being, and as the need for global learning and understanding increases, so do the demands placed upon our system of education. Clearly, George G. Dodge Intermediate School's administration, including its principal, Reggie Holland, and its faculty, staff, and students, can feel privileged to be associated with such a proud heritage. Thus, it is with great satisfaction that we praise George G. Dodge Intermediate School on its recent honor and pay tribute to all of those involved with its success. Signed, Senator Larry Alhof, President of the Ohio Senate, and Senator Frank LaRose of the 27th Senatorial District."
And we send our sincere appreciation to Senator LaRose for his kindness to our school. Next, I'd like to ask our State Board of Education Representative, Mrs. Lisa Woods, to please come forward.
I want to say thank you for the opportunity to speak to the Twinsburg Board of Education this evening. It's always a privilege to see in person the great work schools are doing, which is evident from the Ohio Schools to Watch designation. It is clear that Principal Reggie Holland and his staff have been hard at work in achieving great things. Only a small number of schools are recognized for this achievement, and they prove to be a guide for all schools in Ohio. I'm working with the State Board leadership to send a certificate to Principal Holland and his staff to highlight the work that is being performed on a daily basis. I thank you again for this opportunity and look forward to George G. Dodge Intermediate Schools reaching new heights.
Thank you, Mrs. Woods. Thanks for your continued support of public education here in Ohio. We appreciate all that you do for our students. Next, I'd like to introduce the Mayor of the City of Twinsburg, Mr. Ted Yates.
Good evening, everyone. You know, for me, this is a really special honor to be able to stand up here and congratulate Dodge. I've had, I've got three children that were born and raised in Twinsburg, started at Wilcox. One just graduated college, one just started college, and I got one hanging out in the high school still, so. But I'm very proud of our school district. I spend a lot of my days talking about how proud I am of the city and our school district because they really go hand in hand. You really can't be successful in one without being successful in the other, so it's so important that we have the relationship that we do and that you guys put the effort you do into making sure that our kids are educated and are great citizens of our city and the northeast area, so just thank you so much. But I do have a proclamation that I'd like to read, so. You guys have been standing there a while. I don't have any congressional minutes, I'm sorry. "Whereas the administration, council, and residents of the City of Twinsburg, Ohio, extend congratulations to George G. Dodge Intermediate School for being an Ohio School to Watch and a National Forum School to Watch. Whereas Ohio Schools to Watch is a recognition and capacity-building program designed especially for middle-grade schools. OSTW is a partnership between the Ohio Department of Education, the Ohio Middle School Association, Otterbyne University, and the Ohio Federation of Teachers. And whereas OSTW is a state affiliate of the National Forum to accelerate Middle Grades Reform's National Schools to Watch Program. As a state to watch, Ohio recreated the National Schools to Watch Program to address its unique context. And whereas the Ohio Schools to Watch Program seeks to recognize a small number of diverse, high-performing, growth-oriented middle-grade schools to demonstrate academic excellence, high levels of developmental responsiveness, social equitable programs, and a solid organizational structure to provide students with many opportunities to grow. And whereas George G. Dodge Intermediate School has demonstrated all of these characteristics, as evidenced by their performance and ability to show what all middle-school grade schools are capable of achieving, and continues to set forth an excellent example of academic achievement and model of how effective middle-grade schools should work. Now therefore, I, Ted Yates, Mayor of the City of Twinsburg, express my congratulations to George G. Dodge Intermediate School for being selected as an Ohio School to Watch and a National Forum School to Watch, and look forward to the continued achievements that Twinsburg City Schools will bring.
Thank you, Mayor Yates. We sincerely appreciate our continued partnership with the City of Twinsburg. Next, I'd like to ask Mr. Walt Hoffman, who is representing Mayor Sam Alonzo and the Reminderville City Council, to please come forward.
On behalf of the Village of Reminderville, Mayor Alonzo, Village Council, all of our residents, I wish to present to you this proclamation, which I'll read in a moment. Before I do that, I've lived in the community for a while, three grandchildren and three children have been through Dodge. And the award you're receiving probably was deserved for many, many more years than just this year. It's a school that has a wonderful trended tradition, and we're all very, very proud of your accomplishment. So congratulations. I know this was a lot of work on all of your, and Mr. Holland as principal, congratulations. The proclamation reads, "Whereas the National Forum to Accelerate Middle Grades Reform launched the initiative Ohio Schools to Watch in 1999 to identify schools across the United States that are well on their way to meeting the Forum's four criteria for high-performing middle-level schools. Whereas the Forum's four criteria to meet are academic excellence, development responsiveness, social equality, and organizational structures and processes. Whereas George C. Middle Dodge Intermediate School was recognized by the Ohio Department of Education as an Ohio School to Watch and a National Forum School to Watch after demonstrating as a high-performing, growth-oriented, diverse middle for other middle-level schools. Whereas Principal Reginald Holland and his staff have shown dedication and perseverance in creating an effective, positive, and productive environment that is committed to the students of George C. Dodge Intermediate School to provide quality foundation for a successful future. Now therefore, the Mayor of the Village of Reminderville, on behalf of the government and citizens of the village, extend the sincerest of congratulations to the staff and students of George C. Dodge Intermediate School on the occasion of being recognized as an Ohio School to Watch and a National Forum School to Watch. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand this 18th day of December 200... I'm sorry, that date is wrong, but for 2018, Sam Alonzo, the Mayor of Reminderville."
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman, for your continued support of our school district, and please thank the Village Council and Mayor Alonzo for their continued support as well. Next, I'd like to ask Mr. Solera to come forward and to present the proclamations from Twinsburg Township, as well as from the Twinsburg Public Library.
Good evening again. Proclamation number 0118. A proclamation to celebrate the announcement of George G. Dodge Intermediate School as a Ohio School to Watch and a National Forum School to Watch. Whereas this board has a long history of support and partnership with the Twinsburg City School District and its predecessor school districts. And whereas each year, the Ohio Department of Education recognizes outstanding schools throughout the state through its Ohio School to Watch and National Forum School to Watch award programs. And whereas Ohio Schools to Watch recognizes high-performing, growth-oriented, public middle schools that demonstrate academic excellence, developmental responsiveness, social equity, and organizational structures and processes. And whereas on December 19th, 2017, Ohio Schools to Watch visited George G. Dodge Intermediate School to witness firsthand the processes and procedures put in place to provide students with the best education possible. And whereas Principal Reginald Holland, along with the assistant principals, teachers, staff, students, and parents, are truly worthy of recognition for their accomplishments and efforts in receiving this recognition. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Township of Twinsburg, County of Summit, State of Ohio, hereby celebrates the announcement of George G. Dodge Intermediate School in being designated both an Ohio School to Watch and a National Forum Schools to Watch, and presents this proclamation with pride. This proclamation is hereby presented by the Board of Trustees of the Township of Twinsburg, County of Summit, State of Ohio, on this 21st day of February, 2018. Signed, James Baylog, Chair, Thomas Schmidt, Vice Chair, and Jamie DeFabio, Trustee. A proclamation honoring George G. Dodge Intermediate School for outstanding attainment on January 31st, 2018. Whereas both the Twinsburg Public Library and the Twinsburg City School District are committed to providing education and inspiration to all members of the communities we serve. And whereas the future success of our youth is dependent on educators creating a safe learning community in which students feel a sense of pride and the support to reach high-level academic achievement. Whereas the students of George G. Dodge Intermediate School choose to be kind and empathize with others. And whereas the administration and staff at George G. Dodge Intermediate School strive to meet the unique needs of all learners through the application and integration of state standards with added support through intervention. And whereas George G. Dodge Intermediate School demonstrates academic excellence, developmental responsiveness, social equity using organizational structures and processes. And whereas George G. Dodge Intermediate School staff give students exciting ways to learn, such as the Wax Museum, Career Day, and annual trips to Greenfield Village and Camp Fish. And whereas George G. Dodge Intermediate School staff, teachers, students, and parents have a positive and engaged relationship with the Twinsburg Public Library, including the Chatterbooks Book Club. And whereas the board and staff of the Twinsburg Public Library wish to congratulate the Twinsburg City School District and the students, teachers, and staff of George G. Dodge Intermediate School for being designated as an Ohio School to Watch and as a National Forum School to Watch. Now therefore, I, Laura Leonard, Director of the Twinsburg Public Library and a George G. Dodge Intermediate School alumni, congratulate Principal Reggie Holland, teachers, staff, students, and parents on their reception of the Ohio National Forum School to Watch designations. Signed, Laura Leonard, Director, Twinsburg Public Library.
We thank our friends at the township, as well as Laura Leonard and her staff at the Twinsburg Public Library for their continued support of our school district. They are wonderful partners with George G. Dodge Intermediate School, as well as all of our schools, so we thank them for their kindness this evening. Next, I'd like to invite Mr. Waitman Kager to the podium. He is the President of the Twinsburg Support Staff Association.
In sharing this proclamation, I want to share with you that growing up and graduating from this school district, it does my heart well to see it, success and movement. It makes me feel that we're not going backwards, but moving forward. And I thank you for all your work and all your success. On behalf of the members of the Twinsburg Support Staff Association, we want to commend Principal Holland and his staff at Dodge Media School for being recognized as Ohio Department of Education and as the school, Ohio School to Watch, a National Forum School to Watch. I want to make a commitment that as a support staff leader, we want to be there for you. We believe that we can improve in all areas and continue to support you in all that you do. We see that we kind of do the cooking and the cleaning, we bring in the students, and we take them home. So I know that helps you a little bit. But we congratulate you, Mr. Holland and your staff, as Dodge is a continuing lead in the way in striving for excellence of education. And with sincere appreciation and with respect, member of the TSSA, we thank you for all the work that you're doing, and again, our commitment to you.
Thank you, Mr. Hager, for your continued support of our school district. Next, I'd like to ask Mrs. Nora Souda-Raleigh to please come forward, the president of the Twinsburg Education Association.
This is a pleasure, since these are my friends and colleagues up here. I am so grateful to...this is one of my last public duties as president of the TEA. I'll be stepping down next month, but this is an honor, as my...also, my own children have passed through and are presently in Dodge, so I'd like to share with you our proclamation. At George G. Dodge Intermediate School, each and every day, fourth, fifth, and sixth-grade classroom teachers, building principals, intervention specialists, specials teachers in the areas of art, music, and physical education, reading teachers, the guidance counselor, therapists, the support staff, including secretaries, paraprofessionals, cooks, custodians, bus drivers, all work to help students achieve success in learning. We recognize all the hours spent collaborating in professional learning communities, developing project-based learning activities, seeking out each child's story, and executing skilled teaching methods, along with high expectations. This diverse work results in positive learning environment and productive for student achievement. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mrs. Souda-Raleigh, for your continued leadership and support of our teachers, and of course, all of our students. Mr. Holland, I think you told me that you had a few things you wanted to say?
Just very briefly, as we talk about excellence in education and the pride that we have in our students and staff at Dodge, it truly was a unique opportunity and a unique process for us. And the thing that made it most unique was the opportunity to put something in writing and then for guests to come in and see what your children are experiencing every day. And so when I think about an Ohio Schools to Watch kind of award or National Forum kind of award, it really is talking about a Ohio community to watch. Because we have excellent students, we've had excellent parents, we have excellent school systems that lead up to ours to make sure our students are prepared and ready to go. And it's just been a really unique experience, and I can't say enough about our staff and the work that they do to put forward, to make sure that kids are prepared every single day. We are proud about the designation, we are really thankful for all of the accolades that have come to us, but at the end of the day, they go to our community, our parents, our students, and our staff. I did want to briefly have a couple people come up, though, and speak. Representing our fourth-grade class, we have Ms. Debbie Pelka.
Hello. I am Debbie Pelka, and I'm a math teacher at Dodge Intermediate. I have the privilege of working with teachers and students in all three grade levels. I'm here tonight to highlight a few unique things that our fourth-grade team provides our students. First of all, we have been participating in diversity training for all the fourth-grade students. There have been several presentations so far that the students have enjoyed, and some of these topics include: We are more alike than different; understanding the difference between being a bystander and an upstander in a bullying situation; traditions, cultures, and customs. For example, celebrating the New Year and how your family or our families have traditions and customs that may be different than our friends and neighbors. Second of all, two of the fourth-grade homeroom classes, as part of a persuasive writing unit, wrote letters to Mrs. Powers pointing out good reasons to view the movie Wonder based on the book by the same name that they had written in class. As a result of their persuasive letters and hard work, the entire school attended the movie, and hashtag choose kind has been a theme permeating throughout Dodge this year. Lastly, the teachers continue to provide additional support through intervention and extension for their students during IE and occasionally recess time, so that all of our students can reach their potential. Thank you.
So you heard Superintendent Powers talk about that the tenants of the award were more than just academics. We have great academics, but as Ms. Pelka just highlighted, it's providing the opportunity for a well-rounded academic experience for our students. Highlighting and representing our fifth-grade teachers would be our fifth-grade team leader, Mr. Don Schultz.
Good evening. I was asked to speak tonight to say thank you, first of all, for what's a great award. We're very thankful for this. It's a great honor. Very proud to be the team leader of such a great team of teachers. This is my 34th year in teaching, 33 years in Twinsburg, and every year's been fantastic. It's great to see this district grow and grow and grow. I was asked to mention a few things that fifth grade does. Two opportunities that we try to provide for our fifth-grade students, one being the Wax Museum. Many of you know about that, we see some Wax Museum participants here tonight. It's a great project that the students work on, particularly in language arts, and then do a presentation. I'm not going to steal the thunder from Mrs. Jensen, who's here tonight to actually talk a little more in detail about that, and some of the students are invited here to share that with you. One that I'm very proud of also is the great trip at the end of the year, the great fifth-grade field trip to the Henry Ford Museum and Greenfield Complex in Dearborn, Michigan, aka the Great Greenfield Trip. This is our 57th year going on this trip, so as Mr. Hoffman said, it's not only just great opportunities, learning opportunities, but great, rich traditions that we also have here, so we're very proud of that. So again, on behalf of the fifth-grade team, thank you very much.
And as Mr. Schultz said, it's traditions, but it's the experiences that we try to provide for our kids over the three-year period. And so I would be remiss if I didn't give Ms. Lisa Schmack an opportunity to come up as our sixth-grade team leader.
Good evening. I'm very proud to be here tonight to congratulate the Dodge staff on behalf of the sixth-grade team. I'm very proud to be a sixth-grade teacher at Dodge. Sixth-grade team is amazing, but you guys are all amazing, too, to work with every day as well, and the collaboration amongst fourth, fifth, and sixth-grade teachers is wonderful. It's one of the greatest things about working at Dodge, and all of us coming together to do what's right for all of our kids every single day is the reason why we get up every morning and we come to work. So I'm very proud to be a Dodge Tiger, Twinsburg Tiger, and very proud to lead our sixth-grade team this year. We've been doing a lot of activities this year. We're doing school-to-career with Mrs. West from the Cuyahoga Valley Career Center. We've been working on the DARE program with Officer Greg from the Twinsburg Police Department. And currently, we are getting ready for our annual trip as well to Camp Fitch in North Springfield, Pennsylvania. We're looking forward to that. So congratulations to everybody, and it's a well-deserved award.
Kudos to this outstanding staff and to those members of the staff who aren't here this evening. Many of you are running with little ones, or college, or life in general, and for those folks that couldn't be here tonight, please extend our appreciation to them for all their hard work and the dedication to our students. Takes a huge team to help 1,000 kids get through fourth, fifth, and sixth grade. It's a huge effort, and I sincerely appreciate all that you do every single day. Board of Education, we're going to take a break, I hope, and staff, if you would kindly gather in the lobby area, we would like to take some photos of you with all of this hardware, and perhaps with some of our special guests, so that we can memorialize this very special evening. Thank you very much for being here tonight.
Yes, thank you, and I do want to speak on behalf of myself and my colleagues, that it's been said numerous times tonight, it's a team to educate the children. And as a parent of a child at that building, and as a board member, we can't congratulate you guys enough and thank you for the tireless efforts that you guys put forth every day. So thank you again. Well-deserved award. And with that, I will make a motion to recess at... 7:44. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Felber seconds. Mr. Aho, could you please call a roll?
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
The board will take a slight recess to reconvene shortly. We'll reconvene at 7:52. Mr. Aho?
Mr. Solera? Here. Mr. Curtis?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Here.
Mr. Felber?
Here.
And with that, Superintendent Powers, would you like to continue?
Sure. It's been quite a party already, and what's to come, isn't it? Well, this evening, we're here to celebrate some outstanding students from Wilcox Primary School, and from George Dodge Intermediate School, and from Twinsburg High School. So we have so many kids to celebrate, we're going to get right to it. I'd like to ask Ms. Lynn Villa from Wilcox Primary School, as well as Mr. Scott Asti, our assistant principal from the building, to please come forward, so we can celebrate some outstanding Tigers. Good evening.
Okay, so every month, it is our pleasure to recognize some Wilcox students for our Wilcox Rocks Because of You Award. These are boys and girls who are doing their very best every day. They are respectful, they're responsible, and they're caring, and they're safe. And we say that to start our day at school every morning. So, boys and girls, what we're going to do is we're going to call you up, say some really nice stuff that your teachers told us about you. And then, for a nice little spin, we also interviewed the children who are going to recognize their teachers, and that's always fun to hear what they have to say. So, boys and girls, when we call you up, we're going to come on up, and we're going to shake Mrs. Powers' hand, I'm going to give you a hug, and then say hi to Mr. Asti, who has your certificate, and then Mr. Fabio, I think, has a little surprise for each of you. Okay? So I have to put my eyeglasses on, because I cannot see. Okay, first, tonight, we would like to recognize Sarah Guines. She's a first grader in Ms. Littner's class. Ms. Littner said, "Sarah is a wonderful little lady. She is always willing to help do jobs around the classroom. Sarah works hard to complete her work, she knows the classroom routine and the classroom rules. Sarah is a role model for everyone at Wilcox. Sarah makes Wilcox rock." And Sarah shared that Ms. Littner is always very nice because she gives people treats for being good and hugs when they need it. She is always very helpful to Sarah in math, especially when Sarah gets stuck on a certain word in a math problem. Sarah says, "Thank you for allowing us to have parties when we fill our bucket. You rock." Next, we'd like to welcome Nikki G. Ncola, a first grader in Mrs. Littler's class. And Mrs. Littler's here, too, so come on up. Nikki is a very kind boy. He displays a positive attitude at school. This is evident in his work and interactions with his peers. Nikki is eager to learn and loves participating in class activities. He's very respectful toward his teachers and peers. Nikki is a good friend to others and helps others when needed without being asked. Nikki's laugh and smile is infectious. You can see it right there. Mrs. Littler is fortunate to have Nikki as part of her first-grade class. And Nikki shared, "Mrs. Littler rocks because she lets her students play fun learning games like Starfall on the iPads during centers. She always makes math easy by helping us understand it. One time, she helped Nikki with a math paper where he had to add 20 plus 24. Mrs. Littler showed him how to use a number grid, and he did it. Nikki says, 'Thank you for letting me be in your class.'" Next, we have Mariah Williams, a kindergartner from Mrs. Iyani's class. Okay. Mrs. Iyani is so honored to nominate Mariah for the Wilcox Rocks Because of You Award. Each day, Mariah comes to school with a smile on her face, ready to learn. She is responsible and actively participates in class discussions. She's a great friend to all her classmates and is always willing to help anyone. Mrs. Iyani is so proud of Mariah and can't wait to see all the great things she will accomplish. Wilcox rocks because of you, Mariah. Mariah says, "Mrs. Iyani always helps her students and doesn't get mad at them when they get hurt. One time, when Mariah was reading a book, she didn't know the words. Luckily, Mrs. Iyani sat next to her and helped her tap them, and she got it. Mariah was so happy that Mrs. Iyani came back after being absent. Mrs. Iyani rocks." We're glad Mrs. Iyani came back, too. And next, we have Toby Jeppe, a kindergartner in Mrs. Lowe's class. Great job, Toby. Nice. I got five. Toby is a fun-loving student who has made so much progress since the beginning of the school year. He's doing very well with sight words and becoming a good reader. He is a kind friend to all of his classmates and is always helpful to everyone. Mrs. Lowe is glad that Toby is in her class this year. And Toby says, "Mrs. Lowe rocks because she helps her students learn the ABCs in math. Toby remembers the first day of school when Mrs. Lowe helped him with the letter B, and he could only count to one. Now, he can count to 20. Toby thanks Mrs. Lowe for always helping her students grow." He can count to 100 now. And next, we have Tyler Petras from Miss Miller's class. Oh, actually, Tyler is not able to be here tonight, but we still want to honor him. Tyler is a leader and shows others how to follow the classroom and school rules. He is always willing to help a friend in need. Tyler works very hard in class and never gives up. He is kind to his peers and teachers and is always respectful, responsible, and caring. And Tyler shared that Miss Miller, his kindergarten teacher, makes Wilcox rock because she always helps her students with numbers and stuff, and helps her students learn. In math, she always helps her students with their numbers and makes learning fun. Tyler says, "Thank you for helping us learn." And finally, we have Jonathan Baker, a kindergartner in Mrs. Sutton's class. Mrs. Sutton apologized for not being here today. I don't know if you know this, Jonathan, but her daughter got hurt, so she's not going to be able to be here, but we're going to be standby Mr. Asti, okay? Okay, Mrs. Sutton says, "Jonathan is so deserving of this award, and he shows kindness, respect, and an easygoing attitude every day. He is such a hard worker, puts forth positive efforts, and he never complains. Jonathan is a great role model to others, and I'm so grateful he is in my class. What a blessing to all of us at Wilcox. Way to go, Jonathan. I'm so proud of you. Love, Mrs. Sutton." Jonathan said, "Mrs. Sutton rocks because she gives her students stickers when they get to school and hugs whenever they're hurt or sad. Mrs. Sutton has helped Jonathan in math with his numbers, one to 10." Mrs. Sutton has helped Jonathan in math with his numbers, one to 10. Now, he can count to 100. Jonathan says, 'Thank you for coming back and helping your husband in his doctor's appointment. It was nice. Mrs. Sutton rocks.'" Those are awesome Wilcox Rocks and teachers for the month of February. Thank you, boys and girls. Okay, boys and girls, I know everybody out there wants to take pictures, so this is your chance. Take your certificate and turn it around, put it in front of your tummy so we can all see and give a really big smile. Okay, and thank you all for being amazing. We're very proud of you. And next, you want me to turn over to Dodge? Okay, next, we're going to turn it over to Mr. Holland and the Dodge team.
So, good evening again, everyone, and also to some new faces. Again, we're excited to recognize our Students of the Month and Staff of the Month, but before we do that, just a couple of highlights that are going on at Dodge. We were really looking forward. We're about nine days away from our third annual Mother-Son event, and it's going to be a Dodge, and so it is going to be a really unique opportunity. So, I hope to see most of our Dodge mothers and our sons out at that event this week. You can also look forward to hearing more about our snowball dance, which is a dance from one of our special units at the building. Mrs. Walsh's class is going to do that. And most excitingly, most of the things that we're looking forward to that are coming up, we are going to let our students highlight. And so, at this time, I'm going to turn that mic over to Ms. Walsh.
Good evening, everyone. One of the great things that happens at George G. Dodge is we allow students to have a leadership role. And tonight, we have three members of our Student Council who are going to announce the Students of the Month from each grade level.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Unix, Character Count at George G. Dodge Intermediate School. Following students were selected by their teachers at Dodge because they have represented and exemplified the qualities of outstanding leadership, citizenship, academic performance and effort, social skills, and overall accomplishments.
Good evening. My name is Julia Stoddard. The character word for fourth grade students for this quarter is "respect." Respect means that we follow the golden rule, are tolerant of differences, use good manners and not poor language, are considerate of the feelings of others, do not threaten, hit, or hurt anyone, and deal peacefully with anger, insults, and disagreements. The fourth grade Students of the Month for Mrs. Cow and Mrs. Jackson's classes are Baron
The character word for fifth grade students for this quarter is "caring." Caring means that one is kind, compassionate, and protective. It means that one expresses gratitude, forgives others, and helps people in need. Caring students are also charitable and selfless. The fifth grade Students of the Month for Mrs. Jensen and Mr. Savage's classes are Addison
Good evening. My name is Zachary Galuppi. The character trait for the sixth grade students for this quarter is citizenship. Being a good citizen means that you do your share and make your school and community better. You cooperate and you get involved in community affairs. You say informed votes. You are a good neighbor. You obey laws and rules. You respect authority. You protect the environment, and you volunteer in your school, community, and community at large. The sixth grade Students of the Month from Mrs. Black, Mr. Willis, Mr. Wirick, and Mr.
I would like to provide you with an update on the many projects and initiatives that we are working on as a Student Council at George G. Dodge Intermediate School. We hosted a school-wide Career Day on Friday, February 2nd. It was an exciting day, and many parents and members of the community came to share their experience and expertise. Student Council also sponsored a penny drive with proceeds that benefit the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. We are currently underway with Black History Month Celebration. It's going to be a busy and exciting month.
Parents, this is your photo op, so if you have not gotten a great picture of our lovely students, please do so. Now, students, make sure you hold your certificates in front of you, but not covering your beautiful And I think we've embarrassed you enough. You can have a seat. One of the things I just have to say as our students are leaving, and we talk about giving students voices at Dodge, is during the visit for Ohio Schools to watch, they spent a lot of time talking to our students. And if there's one group that you're going to get honest, honest, honest answers from the cup, and those are our students, and they did a fantastic job, community and family, you would have been proud of your children, watching them interact and just be themselves. So, great job. Now, I have the task of talking and introducing our top Tigers, our Employees of the Month. And while we're up here today, and I'm listening to the accolades, and I'm thinking about our students, I'm thinking about our families, and I'm thinking about the things that I see teachers do each and every day, and I did get a little emotional because it's true and it's real, and I am proud of them. So, I'm going to introduce our first team, and I'm calling them a team, is Mrs. Bush and Mrs. Raska. Would you please come to the stage? Mrs. Bush and Mrs. Raska was nominated by Mrs. McQ, and she nominated them because of their work as a co-teaching team. And they are diligent and they are strong, especially when it comes to the area of reading. But, one of the things that I know the administrative team, other colleagues witnessing them, is their tenacity. And when it comes to students, and when it comes, I know we hear that cliche, "No child left behind." That is certainly the truth with this team. They do whatever it takes to make sure students are learning, that they reach high expectations, that they are not overlooked, and they work hard for us and they love them. And I think that's 75% of the battle. They love them. And when you love them and the students know it, everything else falls into place. So, I thank you every single day for what you do for our kids at Dodge. Our next staff member was nominated by two staff members, Mrs. Magnus and Ms. McQ. And I think, had she not been nominated this month, I try to stay out of it. I let the staff, we let the staff members do it, but she was going to get my nomination. And this person really is like a right-left-hand person for the building. She works hard for our students, for our staff. When you hear about a lot of the things going on, especially with our Student Council, working with our Career Day, working with student groups, all of those things, our random acts of kindness, you won't be able to talk about those things without Ms. Cheryl Linden, our Some of the things that Mrs. Magnus said and Ms. McQ said is, "Mrs. Linden is our very busy school counselor. She set up, sought out speakers for our entire day for Career Day. It was enjoyable, it was well-planned, and it was obvious that she spent a lot of time doing it. She always has a smile on her face and is willing to help out anyone in need." And when I say that Mrs. Linden is our right and left hand, she really is. Anything that's going on, she has a touch on it or a pulse on it in our school. She does it with a smile, and she does it again with care for students. And like I said, can't do one thing without the other. And I appreciate everything you do each and every day, Cheryl. So, I would like to turn the floor back over to Mr. Holland.
So, one of the things that we always get an opportunity to talk about are some of the great programs that you heard about, our Black History Month Celebration, you heard about our Career Day, and I can thank you, Mrs. Linden, because that was a fantastic experience. But, we've got an even greater fantastic experience coming up tomorrow. And so, at this point, I would like to introduce Mrs. Jensen as she talks about Black's Museum
Good evening. Hello. I'm Mrs. Jensen. I'm a fifth grade Language Arts teacher, and I brought in a few of my statues this evening to show off and showcase what the fifth grade, the entire class, has been working on since January 8th. It's a seven-week research project that the kids dive into and really get a hands-on experience into the research and process of it. They obviously write a paper, five-paragraph paper, learning about their career, why they're famous, their family, their education, their philanthropy, which is a whole word in itself for the kids, how to write a proper bibliography, and then they dress up as this person in a costume, they write a speech, they have props that explains their career, and what am I missing? A scrapbook to put together their life in a nutshell. So, they are going back and forth between third and first person, which can be a challenge, but the kids did a phenomenal job. So, I would like to ask my students, my statues that I invited up tonight, to come on up and So, tomorrow evening, afternoon, actually, just put it out a little bit. The kids will all be on display throughout our building, starting at 3:30. You're all welcome to come and see them. My kids will be in the cafeteria, and they just give their little speech, and you have to press the play button, though, because they are frozen statues, and they come to life when you press their button to play. So, I'm going to start down here with Bruce Lee.
Haya. I karate chopped the second to the last person, then the last person tries to hit me back, but I was going faster than him. I kick him right in the chest. Boom, down he goes. Hello, I am Bruce Lee, and I am famous for being a martial arts fighter and for being a movie actor. I was born on November 27th, 1943, and I was born in Chinatown. I had two parents and two sisters and two brothers. My birth name was Li Ju Fan, but the nurses said my American name was Bruce. I started acting when I was around six years old. When I was a few months old, I starred in the movie Golden Gate Girl. I traveled to many places when I was growing up. When I was in Hollywood, I starred in many famous movies. I studied dancing and won the Hong Kong Cha Cha Competition. I discovered my own type of Kung Fu style called Jeet Kune Do. Many of my achievements came from my ability to overcome limits. I trained many people for they can have self-defense. I trained my son, Brandon Lee, how I do my workout every day when he was very young. I had the ability to perform push-ups using only my thumb and index finger on one hand. I was able to jump eight feet from a standstill, almost 1.5 times my body height. I could break wooden boards six inches thick. I could throw grains of rice into the air and then catch them in mid-flight using chopsticks. I wasn't pure Chinese, I was actually part of German. I had bad eyesight because Wing Chun is worried about touch, not sight. My favorite and secret hobby was writing poetry, and I was pretty good at poetry. I was so fast that I could take a coin from your open hand and replace it with another coin before you had to have time to close it. I had a wife named Linda Cadwell, and they, I was married in 1964. When we had our first boy named Brandon Lee, then we had a girl named Shannon Lee. Then, when Brandon grew up, he became an action filmer and starred in The Crow. Then Shannon grew up and became an actress. I died because of an allergic reaction from a painkiller. I died in 1973 at the age of 32. Thank you for listening to my career.
And next, we have professional soccer player, Tim Howard.
It's Manchester United versus Arsenal. The game is tied at 1-1. We are going to a penalty shootout. Manchester is winning 4-3. If Tim Howard could save this next shot, it's all over. Tim Howard saves. Manchester United have just won the Community Shield. Hello, I am Tim Howard, and I'm famous for playing for the New Jersey Imperials, New York New Jersey Metrostars, Manchester United, Everton, the USA National Team, and the Colorado Rapids. I was born on March 16th, 1979, in North Brunswick, New Jersey. My mom got me involved in soccer when I was six years old. When I was 10 years old, I got diagnosed with Tourette Syndrome. Tourette Syndrome causes me to have involuntary body movements, obsessive thoughts, and vocal tics. When I was 10, I joined the GK1 Academy. This is my first private academy for soccer. Tim Malqueen coached me and is still a good friend of mine to this day. During high school, I played basketball and soccer. My basketball team in 1997 won the county championship 66-55. After high school, I joined the New Jersey Imperials. This was a minor league team. After that, I transferred to my first-ever professional team, the New York New Jersey Metrostars. Whenever, when I became a starting keeper for the Stars, I talked about my tics and helped raise $50,000 for the New Jersey Center for Tourette Syndrome. In 2003, I made history. I became the first ever American to play for Manchester United. Manchester United is one of the most famous clubs in the world and is in the Premier League, which is an English soccer league. Manchester United years for fun, but I had to move on with my career. So, in 2006, I joined Everton, another club in the Premier League. When the 2014 World Cup came around, I was ready to explode. All of my training was for this event. My last game was amazing. I set a World Cup record for the most saves during one match, 15 saves. After that match, I got a call on my cellphone from President Obama. He was thanking me for my efforts and telling me, "Good job," about my record. Now, I play for the Colorado Rapids, a team in the MLS, which is Major League Soccer. Now I play for the Colorado Rapids, a team in the MLS, which is Major League Soccer. I joined for their 2016-17 season. In conclusion, Tim Howard has had a very amazing journey throughout his life and has helped many people reach for their own goals. Thank you all very much for listening.
Next is Rosa Parks.
Extra, extra, read all about it, Rosa Parks gets arrested by the police. Hello, I'm Rosa Louise McCally Parks, and I am famous for leading the change in civil rights. This all happened because I wouldn't give up my seat on the bus. I had worked all day, plus I was tired. I was brought into this world on February 4th, 1913, in Tuskegee, Alabama, to James and Leona McCally. In 1915, my younger brother, Sylvester, was born. I loved being a big sister. I met a young man, his name was Raymond Parks. We got married on December 18th, 1932, in my mother's house on Park. I remember it like it was yesterday, when I bravely refused to give up my seat to a white man. I was arrested for this because in 1955, that was a law. Black people had to give up their seat if a white person needed a spot to sit. I was also an activist for civil rights, and I don't like to brag, but I was the best dream since my business ever had, only because I took my time. I was in the NAACP, the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People. I felt proud and happy working for them. One of my biggest accomplishments was the National Underground Railroad Freedom Award. This was an award I won. On October 24th, 2005, Detroit, Michigan, at the age of 92, I died in natural causes. I hope I made the world a better place for all people by leading the change for civil rights. I wasn't tired of work, I was tired of being treated wrongly and listening to the white man. The laws just weren't fair. Now we don't have to be separated from the white man and woman. Thank you, listeners.
Sally Ride is next.
Five, four, three, two, one, blast off! And I am about to make history to be the first American woman astronaut in space. Hello, I am Sally Ride, and I am famous for being the first American woman astronaut in space. I was born on May 26th, 1951, in Los Angeles, California. I spent a lot of time as a kid doing experiments. I went to Stanford University where I earned my double-major bachelor's degree in physics and English, and my master's degree and PhD in physics. I began my five years of training at NASA. On June 18th, 1983, I became the first American woman astronaut to go to space. I spent six days on a space shuttle Challenger. After NASA, I became director of the California Space Institute, then an author, then started Sally Ride Science, my company. I created a kit set for NASA that allowed schools to do experiments during live space shuttle missions. I showed women that they can do what men can do. In 2003, I was inducted into the Astronaut Hall of Fame. I passed away July 23rd, 2012, at the age of 61, from pancreatic cancer. As I have always ended talks with students, reach for the stars. Thank you for listening and have a good night.
And finally, all the way from across the pond, Queen Elizabeth.
Did you know that I was not supposed to be the queen when I was born? It wasn't until I was 10 years old that I became heir presumptive. My Uncle King Edward VIII abdicated the throne and my father became King George. Hello, I am Queen Elizabeth, and I am famous for being the Queen of England. I have been the queen for over 66 years. I am the world's longest reigning monarch. I celebrated my sacrifice rule last year. I was born on April 21st, 1926, at 2:40 a.m. at the Duke and Duchess of York. When I was little, I lived on 17 Bruton Street, but when World War II started, I moved to Winstor Castle to make sure my family and I were safe. During the war, I worked for the Auxiliary Territorial Service maintaining vehicles for the British Army. I love horses and horse racing. I won a Wow Lifetime Achievement Award from the FBI Federation Equestrian International. I have always loved to take photographs and make whole movies. Many of my photos have been used publicly to share events of my family's life. The people of my country see them as they see themselves, ordinary. Although I have great wealth and position, I have always made myself accessible to them. Myself, the royal family, and all our many royal ceremonies have brought a lot of tourism to my country. The tourism has helped with my country's economic growth. I am patron to many charities such as the British Red Cross and Cancer Research UK. I feel it is important to help all people worldwide. Now I am the queen, my duties are mostly formal and ceremonial. I reign, but I do not rule. The Prime Minister and Parliament run the government. I can only offer my advice on important matters of government. I have reigned as queen for 66 years, the longest of any British monarch. I am now 91 years old and still going strong. Being queen is a very important job. I have always tried to lead by example. I have been referred to as extraordinary but ordinary because I believe in hard work, family, and devotion to duty. I have dedicated my life to the service of my country and its people.
So again, if you can make it over to Dodge tomorrow at 3:30, it's free admission, and the statues will be on display throughout the building. Thank you.
Boys and girls who presented tonight, if you would like a pin from Mrs. De Fabio, she'd love to give you one. And as this is transitioning, I'd like to ask Mrs. Chiringo, the principal from Queensburg High School, to please come forward to celebrate some of our oldest tigers right now.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for staying and hearing this presentation. We're excited to celebrate tonight with our, some of our amazing artists that are here tonight to show us their prizes and some of the things that they've done, just some samples that Mrs. Mosenko and her art team have done here at our high school. So I'd like to have Mrs. Mosenko come on up. Hello, Mrs. Mosenko, and she, I know she has a book with her, but she's gonna say a little bit about some of these awards that our students have won in the last couple weeks. I wouldn't do it justice to talk about these awards, but we're also gonna have the students come up in a minute and show us the actual samples of some of their artwork.
Okay, I have two great artists that are seniors this year. I've had them three years in art, and they are probably one of my most dedicated art students. They've done a really nice job throughout the years, and I am definitely gonna miss them and their accolades that they've acquired throughout the years. The first one that I would like to come up here is Alex. She was an award winner at the 2018 Northeast Central Ohio Scholastic Art Competition, where 3,811 entries, single entries, were looked at and gone through, and she was awarded with one of the top awards. She also received four honorable mentions, three silver keys, and one gold. And she's gonna talk about her gold because it's really special.
So for this project, I had a prompt from an art school that I needed to complete for my portfolio, and to be honest, I was pretty lost when I first heard it. The prompt was plastic. And with a lot of my artwork, I like to take it in more of a conceptual direction. So through like hours of brainstorming, I came up with the concept of a plastic politician. And I like to take political cartoons kind of like to the next level and try to make them something bigger than just like a single panel in the newspaper. So I put together this three-page spread, drawn in markers, demonstrated how a lot of politicians kind of seem to follow the same tropes and like say the same things and do the same things. So that's what I wanted to demonstrate with this. And this artwork also has the potential to go on to like the national level, so that's exciting as well. As well as the gold key, which I had been notified about prior to going to the award show, I received the American Vision Award, and it was a wonderful surprise. And that's kind of like a investment show.
And my second senior is Lucas. Lucas Fisher had the second showing at the Cleveland Clinic Expressions Program. He was awarded two times for this program, which is very, very unique, and I'm gonna let him talk about it a little bit.
Terrific. Yes. So first, I'd like to say I'm very honored that I have the opportunity to win awards in two years. I mean, it's a very rare occasion for that to happen. And secondly, I would like to thank Mrs. Chiringo and Mrs. Powers for giving me so much support in the Expressions. They were there with me last Thursday in Cleveland, showing me their full support. So I'd like to thank you. And next, I would like to talk about my current project. It is supposed to demonstrate that bloodstreams and hand hygiene have no correlation whatsoever. And so, but I mean, as children, we have always learned that washing our hands is the optimal choice because it's common knowledge. And so that's why the title, or it says, "Why Are You Not Washing Your Hands?" Because there's wires coming out of it. I like to put play on words in my titles. And speaking of play on words, my last year's project was an honorable mention, and it's supposed to demonstrate ECT, and it's, ECT is a form of curing depression, and it's, the title says that it's not so depressing. Thank you.
Expressions is much more than mere art, writing, or math competition. It's tied to state, national, academic standards. The Innovative Program gives participants a deeper real-world understanding of science, art, language, and math while promoting creativity, innovation, and communication and teamwork. And it really is a wonderful program. I've done it for nine years now, and my students have really gained a lot of knowledge through it and had a good experience, right? Okay.
Alex, who'd you bring here tonight?
My parents are here. Thank you for speaking.
Yes, they are in Hawaii right now.
Congratulations, Lucas, it's a pleasure. And Mrs. Mosenko, you know, these kids are amazing, but of course, there's an educator behind much of this work, and Sharon puts in so many hours to help these students with these competitions. So we are very proud of the students, but I couldn't say enough about Sharon to bring them to the next level. So congratulations. Congratulations. I asked Mr. Silverthorne to join me tonight. Alex, good thing you didn't do plastic principle, Anna. We can't be plastic, huh? So we're here this evening for also one thing, one other thing, is to talk about our building highlight. Next Tuesday, 286 juniors will be sitting for the ACT. And again, this is the second year that Ohio is offering, or actually requiring it, of the juniors to take the test free of charge. They'll cover the cost, but our students will be able to sit for the ACT to attempt, hopefully, to earn a college-ready score. And that will be Tuesday, and we're going to give it, as soon as they walk in, 7:15, they're gonna head to their classroom to take the ACT, and they'll take it for the better part of the day, all the way up to their lunch, and then up to 4th Block. So it is a pretty lengthy test. So I'd like to ask Mr. Silverthorne to say a couple words about some of the statistics related to the ACT and a three-year trend at our high school.
Thanks, Mrs. Chiringo. Yeah, just to kind of go over, obviously, the important pieces are already highlighted for you. As you can see throughout the three-year trend of 2015, 16, and 17, the most important piece is that we have increased our composite score, which is the last piece of the chart. You can see the composite scores of 22.8 to 23 to 23.2 with last year's senior class. So that's a nice trend, that it's moving up every year. And one other piece with, just so you know, 23 is kind of the threshold score that kind of is the first stop for success in college, that you will be successful with that score. Obviously, there are outliers both ways, but 23 is kind of the one you try to shoot for with your kids. It's supposed to mean that there's success. So going a little bit over 23 now, and hopefully continuing that trend for the future. So you can see us even compared to the state, it's higher than the state every year and has increased, so we're absolutely, we're happy about that.
Thank you, and we wish our juniors luck next Tuesday.
Thank you, Ms. Chiringo. Thank you, Mr. Silverthorne, good to see you. Mrs. Silver, that completes a whole evening of celebrations.
Continuing to get the records for the longest school board meeting.
Yes, you will.
I will never complain when we get to highlight such great things, so I do appreciate everyone coming out tonight, and appreciate those who stuck around, two now. This is where we will continue to kind of move on with the business of the district. But it is quarter to nine already, and it looks like we just have some high school students around, but I'm sure you guys have homework and things to do, so definitely now's a good time if you're looking to get out. Thank you very much and congratulations again. So with that, I will move to committee reports. Do we have any reports from any of the standing committees?
Yes. Some of the highlights from the Curriculum Technology Meeting, February 12, 2018, were, they have three honors diploma available for the students starting this year. STEM honors diploma, arts honors diploma, social science and civic engagement honors diploma, the adoption of biology textbooks, and the adoption of the Spanish, new Spanish series textbook. textbooks. And that's about it.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? All right. Moving on, Mr. Aho, do we have any blue cards for our monsters?
No blue cards.
All right. Moving on to item I, Treasurer's Report and Recommendations. Item I-1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following meeting minutes, the regular meeting of February 7, 2018, as sent to the Board under separate cover. Do I have a motion to accept item I-1?
So moved.
Mr. Curtis makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Davis, second. Any discussion? Mr. Aho, please call the roll.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes. Item I-1 passes 5-0. Without objection from my colleagues, I will read items J-1 through 4. Item J-1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the certificated licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Item J-2, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Item J-3, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. And item J-4, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a three-year administrative contract for Martin Aho, Treasurer, effective August 1, 2018, through July 31, 2021, per the attached exhibit. Do I have a motion for items J-1 through 4?
So moved.
Mr. Felber, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Davis, seconds. Discussion?
I just want to make a comment, you know, while all of our staff is certificated and classified is important, as well as supplemental contracts, highlighting, Mr. Aho's been with this district for many, many years. This board, boards before me and many of my colleagues, have worked on the Finance Committee, and Marty is the quiet force behind the numbers, always at the ready. More awards than I can recall that have come up here from the orders for clean audits year after year after year. That's not an easy accomplishment. It's a very complicated position with changing laws all the time. So, I just wanted to draw your attention to his accomplishments through, how many? Seventeen? How many years?
Sixteen.
Sixteen years with this district.
Thank you.
Make sure you record the vote properly.
Any other discussion, items J-1 through 4? Mr. Aho, roll call?
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes. Items J-4 pass 5-0. Congratulations, Mr. Aho.
Thank you.
Without objection from my colleagues, I will read K, items K-1 through 11. K-1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a donation from Summit Education Initiative, 120 East Mill Street, Suite 300, Akron, Ohio 44308, in the amount of $500 to support the Early Learning Readiness Coalition at Wilcox Primary School, per the attached exhibit. Item K-2, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a donation from Target One Scholarship Way, St. Peter, Minnesota, 56082. Scholarship America Field Trips Grant Program, in the amount of $700, to be used to cover the expenses for a field trip to the Great Lakes Science Center for the Wilcox Primary School kindergarten students, per the attached exhibit. Item K-3, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves an amendment to the Sanderro Therapies Incorporated Agreement, approved on June 28, 2017, to allow for college students to complete clinical training in the Twinsburg City School District under the jurisdiction of Sanderro Therapies Incorporated officials, per the attached exhibit. Item K-4, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following revised job descriptions, as per the attached exhibit. Transportation Supervisor, Assistant to the Director of Pupil Services, Administrative Assistant, Assistant Principal, Administrative Assistant, Elementary School Principal, Administrative Assistant, High School Principal, Administrative Assistant, High School Athletic Department. Item K-5, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a Field and Student Teaching Experience Agreement with Ursuline College to place college students in our district for the purpose of observation, fieldwork, and student teaching experiences, as sent to the Board under separate cover. Item K-6, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the Twinsburg High School Marquee Project, at a total cost of $24,981, provided to the Board under separate cover. This project is comprised of an AEP-A contract for the Electronic Message Center from Daktronics, 201 Daktronics Drive, Brookings, South Dakota, 57006, at a cost of $20,181, as well as a contract for the installation of the sign, including renovating the masonry and a new header sign from Rough Neon Signs and Lighting Maintenance Incorporated, 295 West Prospect, Paintsville, Ohio, 44077, at a cost of $4,800. The project will be funded through various Twinsburg High School graduating class funds, as sent to the Board under separate cover. Item K-7, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the Tennis Facility Use Agreement with Western Reserve Racket and Fitness Club, 11013 Aurora Hudson Road, Streetsboro, Ohio, 44241, for use of their tennis facility between February 14, 2018 and March 4, 2018, per the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement, as sent to the Board under separate cover. Item K-8, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a proposal for an overnight extended student trip for members of the Twinsburg High School Swimming and Diving Team to participate in the OHSAA State Swimming and Diving Championship Meet from February 22, 2018 through February 24, 2018, at the CT Branded Natorium in Canton, Ohio. The trip will be paid for by the THS Athletic Department, along with support from the Twinsburg Athletic Boosters, as sent to the Board under separate cover. Item K-9, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the revised proposal for an overnight extended student trip for Twinsburg High School students to participate in the Nordonia Schools Teen Institute Winter Retreat from Friday, February 23, 2018, through Sunday, February 25, 2018. Proposal was originally approved on February 7, 2018. This trip will be paid in full through the Summit County ADM Board Grant, as sent to the Board under separate cover. Item K-10, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the lease agreement with Twins Days Inc. for the use of district grounds and facilities during Twins Days from August 3, 2018 through August 5, 2018, as sent to the Board under separate cover. Item K-11, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves Renner Auto Intellectual Property Law for legal counsel representation during 2018 for the purpose of obtaining the trademark for the district's logo. Do I have a motion to accept items K-1 through 11?
So moved.
Mr. Curtis moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Go ahead.
Second.
Mrs. Davis, seconds. Real quickly, I would like to thank Summit Education Initiative. They're a great partner and continue to allow us to provide some additional programming and opportunities for our students. So, thank you for that, as well as the Target One, Target for the scholarship for the Great Lakes Science Center. Superintendent Powers, would you be able to speak to item K-6, the high school sign?
Sure. Well, Mrs. Tringó has been wanting a new high school sign for as many years as she has been principal at Twinsburg High School, and I suppose this is her legacy upon her retirement this year. But we are finally going to be installing a brand-new sign in front of Twinsburg High School. And Board of Education, it's at no cost to the Board, because the graduating classes that have passed through those halls under Mrs. Tringó's leadership, when they had additional funds left in their accounts, Mrs. Tringó contacted them, and they very generously agreed this would be a great purpose for those left dollars that were in the fund. So, the class of 2011 is donating $8,000. The class of 2012 is $4,000. The class of 13, about $6,500. The class of 14, almost $5,000. And the class of 15, about $2,600. So, we appreciate our alumni, who think this is a great idea, a great going-away gift to the high school principal, who was so influential to that. And also, we are also having some dollars from our PTA to help get the project amount over to the amount that we need to make it at no cost to the Board of Education and to our residents. So, congratulations. We thank the city of Twinsburg. Mr. Welker here has been working to make sure all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed as far as the right things to do in the installation of a brand-new electric sign. So, thank you, Chad. And we look forward to getting this project done, hopefully before Mrs. Tringó leaves on August 1st.
Thank you.
I'm really actually, when I was saying, well, I was saying something, too. I had a conversation with one of the board members, saying, "What a great idea. Like, I wish we would have this come into our buildings." And I think when I was having the conversation, I was well already into the work. So, I'm really excited that we're having that, too. And it's something that I was hoping to see someday, too.
Yes. Thank you to the alumni and the PTA as well for that. Also want to wish the best of luck to Mr. Martin and Mr. Yates on their trip coming to the state's swimming championship, swimming competition. So, with that, if there's any other discussion?
I do have a question.
Yes.
So, does, we pay for the trip for the swimmers and divers, and then their coaches to go down to Canton?
For item eight.
For item eight?
So, that's coming from the Athletic Department Fund, Mrs. DeFabio.
Okay.
And as far as where it indicates, the Twinsburg Athletic Boosters, they have been always very generous, paying for the meals for the students.
Okay.
And that's what that is indicating here on the agenda.
Okay. Now, what about the coaches?
They're going with the kids, too.
Okay.
Any other discussion on items K-1? Mr. Aho, roll call?
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes. Items K-1 through 11 passes 5-0. Without objection from my colleagues, I will read items K-12 and 13 together. Item K-12, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education adopts and purchases Sanderro's Series Level 1, 2, and 3 textbook for the Spanish courses offered at Twinsburg High School and RB Chamberlain Middle School. The adoption was approved by the District Curriculum Technology Committee on February 12, 2018. Final quantities will be based on student enrollment. Estimated total cost is $39,192.44. This is a permanent improvement expenditure. Item K-13, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education adopts and purchases Miller &amp; Levine Biology Textbook for the biology course offered at Twinsburg High School. The adoption was approved by the District Curriculum and Technology Committee on February 12, 2018. Final quantities will be based on student enrollment, with an estimated total cost of This is a permanent improvement expenditure. I have a motion to accept items K-12 and 13.
So moved.
Mrs. Davis, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Felber, discussion? Mr. Aho, please call the roll.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes. Items K-12 through 13 passes 5-0. Item K-14, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a joint agreement with the Educational Service Center of Cuyahoga County, which identifies the Business Advisory Council of the Educational Service Center of Cuyahoga County, known as the Northeast Ohio Business Advisory Council, to serve as the district's Business Advisory Council to meet the requirements of Ohio Revised Code 3313.82 and 3313.821, per the attached exhibit. Do I have a motion to accept item K-14?
So moved.
Mrs. Davis, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Felber, any discussion on K-14? Mr. Aho, roll call, please.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes. Item K-14 passes 5-0. We ran out of item L miscellaneous.
I just want to congratulate Dodge again for the high schools watch. I have my third and last child going through Dodge currently, and I know they always provide so many great hands-on activities and learning experience and things that go beyond just the four walls of the one classroom or two classrooms that the kids switch back and forth with during the day. And lots of them, great activities through the PTA with the father-daughter dance and mother-son game night, just especially, too, what they were talking about tonight with the wax museum, just lots of really great activities that Dodge provides for our students. And so, congratulations to the teachers, the staff, administrators, and everybody who help out with our kids, and it's great stuff for the kids to be a part of.
I do have a couple of things. As I tend to report on legislative issues, I do have some matters to report on legislation. First and foremost, House Bill 512. If you're not familiar with it, as a community, you need to. This is a bill that was recently introduced, and it's proposed legislation that, and I'm gonna be, you know, just kind of briefly encapsulate the purpose of the legislation, but it severely limits, it would severely limit the powers of the State Board of Education. And it also consolidates the Ohio Department of Education, the Department of Higher Education, as well as workforce development into one entity under the leadership of one individual to be appointed by the governor. For some very obvious reasons, I have some strong and serious concerns about this legislation. First and foremost, what it does to limit the ability to govern the State Board of Education. So, essentially, 80% of what they do would be taken away from them. And the two other elements that they primarily would be, continue to do is really around licensure and around any disciplinary issues relative to licensed individuals, you know, for education in the state of Ohio. All other areas where it comes to policy would be taken away from them, and that would be, and that would fall under the leadership of this one individual to be, to be appointed by the governor. So, huge issue there, but one of the other issues that if this were to come to fruition, it's just my opinion that this would have later consequences as a result to other elected officials, specifically other elected officials that serve on boards of education around the state. We're elected by the people, and I have some very serious concerns around the implications whereby these elected Board of Education members for the State Board, you know, essentially, you know, you're basically taking away the voices of the people that elected them. I have been in contact with Christina Rogner, who was here earlier. We had a very long conversation around my concerns around this. She shares my concerns. She agrees with me in areas that I pointed out to you this evening, and she has assured me that she will make sure that these concerns are heard, and she has also assured me that she will keep me abreast as this bill continues to move through the process. Update on House Bill 87, and this is the bill that I've collaborated with Representative Rogner for over a year now, but essentially, it says that any charter school that has a finding of recovery, those funds, instead of the funds going back to the General Assembly or the General Fund for the state, those funds would go back to the districts from whence they came. I want to remind you that the bill was voted unanimously out of committee at the House, and so now she is working hard to get this on the agenda for the House so that it can be voted out of the House and continue on to the Senate. So I'm hopeful that that happens sooner than later, but she wanted to make sure that I gave that update as well, that we're continuing to work hard on this and get it done, and, you know, we'll continue to let you know about that. The next board meeting, I will be absent, but for a good reason. I'm going to be attending a legislative seminar in Washington, DC, and we are in the midst of scheduling meetings with our elected representatives. I'll be thrilled to report out my progress on those meetings and, you know, and kind of the issues that I bring up to our elected officials in Washington. Three years ago, I had an opportunity to lobby on the Hill, and it was an amazing, amazing experience. And I know that a lot of constituents are able to meet our constituents, you know, here when they're in their districts, but there's nothing like going to Washington, DC on the Hill and just having that experience and addressing them, you know, where everything happens. So I'm looking forward to taking advantage of that opportunity and representing Twinsburg and the issues that we have, and hopefully making a difference to make sure that, you know, our voices are heard and making sure that we can get some movement. Last but not least, I know that Mrs. Powers spoke about this the last board meeting. I want to make sure that I continue to update you that the Twinsburg High School on Tuesday, February 27, the High School Black History Club is going to be presenting the Freeman Family Reunion. It's a community celebration of an original stage production, and the production is scheduled to begin at 6:30 in the auditorium. Last year, I was able to go to their event. It was awesome, completely put on by the students. I was blown away by just all of the creativity, all of the talent. So I'm looking forward to attending this one as well. And also afterwards, I'm told that there's going to be some soul food cookout. I love soul food, so I'm looking forward to taking advantage of that. So I want to make sure that, you know, I want to encourage the community to come out and support these students and the staff that are involved in putting on this event.
Is it promoting student club? Do the students, they're trying to get more awareness of their club also?
So I'll be there.
I wanted to also thank Mr. Curtis for bringing up several of those bills, including House Bill 512. That was really the press conference announcing. It was just on, I believe, February 14. So there's some chatter already. Many of the organizations that we participate in, OSBA and so forth, BASSA, have already come out against this, I think, on the same day. What's very interesting, it's a 28-minute video where they announce the legislation, trot out all the people in support of it. About 95 or almost 98% of it's talked about workforce development. It's not until you get to the end when the people start asking, the press start asking questions, and you start to hear the concerns that Mr. Curtis brought up. So it's, some people are concerned that the legislation is being fast-tracked. I don't believe it's indication of that yet, but we are watching that very closely. And I've been contacted by folks that are already concerned. So I think that one's certainly one to watch. While workforce development is very important across the state, the way they're doing it is very much of concern.
Mr. DeFabio, any miscellaneous?
Just want to wish Bradley Gates and Colin Martin the best of luck at states. And GE, good luck, and RBC Singers this weekend in their big competition.
And again, thanks to Dodge and everything that they do. It was great, great recognition tonight, definitely worth the time it took. And it was fantastic to see all of our elected officials come out in support of what's going on in their districts that they represent. And as well, Mr. Aho, thank you for your past service and your dedication and leadership to this district, and look forward to the next three years with you.
Thank you.
Mr. Solera, just a couple more things, if you don't mind. I'm sorry for extending it. We missed congratulations to Mr. Brunson upon his retirement.
Yes.
Mr. Brunson has done a fantastic job over in our Transportation Department the last three years. Really has done extraordinary work with aligning some services, bringing on some new software, things with, of course, the CHANCE leadership, too. And we are very sorry to see him go. He is a lifelong educator and was once the Board of Education President, Board Member, so he understands the workings behind the school district as well as the boots on the ground. So we do wish Mr. Brunson all the best as he heads off to retirement. He will be with us through the summer, so thankfully, we'll get those routes up before he leaves. And we will soon post the position of the new Transportation Supervisor and then get going on that application process and interviewing and such. Also, Board of Education, I just want to thank our Twinsburg Police Department. It has been a tough week here, long week for a lot of us who have been managing phone calls and emails from many of our parents who are just nervous about school safety. And we reassure them that our kids are safe and that we have as many things as we know to have in place per the direction of our friends here in the city of Twinsburg. But late last night, over the weekend, we had an issue late last night again, and then all day today, I was on the phone with Twinsburg Police Department, and they have been nothing but cordial, helpful, easy to contact, and efficient in their response time. So I just wanted to thank Chief Chris Snoga, Assistant Chief Bob Goncheski, and the entire department for always supporting the school district. We have not had a situation happen in our district, and I don't want it to make it appear that we have, but we have had a lot of anxious parents and a lot of concern, staff members, and nervous students based on what has been happening in Florida and then our neighbors to the south. And so, when that happens anywhere in schools in the country, it causes our school community to get on edge. And I want to thank our staff, our administrative team, Board of Education for your guidance. You know, we've been on the phone a lot the last four or five days here. And, you know, it is interesting times in our country. A lot of mental health issues that need to be addressed, gun control issues that need to be addressed. And in the middle of all of that, no matter what your political aspiration is, your political belief, we have kids to educate in our schools. And that is the most important natural resource that we have in our country, the children that we have here. And we have to make sure that they have what they need to be successful, including a safe and secure learning environment. And so, I just thank you for your support. I thank our community for our support. I especially thank our parents who have been very anxious this week, and I thank them for reaching out and asking some really good questions because just because we have things in place today doesn't mean that we can't do better. And Board of Education, as you know, last board meeting, you approved our strategic planning effort. One committee of the strategic plan will be safety and security. And so, if you are a member of our parents, residents, and you have an interest in this topic, please give my office a call. We will be getting that effort underway very shortly, and we look forward to partnering with folks here in our community to do the next best thing here for our kids. So thank you, and again, thanks to the Twinsburg Police Department for all of their help this last couple of days.
Thank you, Mrs. Powers, and, you know, thank you to you, too, for the efforts that you've put forth in the past week with you and your staff. I know it's been some long days, some long nights, a lot of phone calls, a lot of emails, and I appreciate that communication, you know, and the assurance to our parents, our district, and our community members.
Welcome.
You know, of our efforts. With that, we do have a need for an executive session. I would make a motion that the Board of Education enters into executive session at 9:10 to discuss employment, compensation, and discipline of public employees as per Board of Education Policy 0166A. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Curtis, second. Mr. Aho, please call the roll.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Now with that, passes 5-0. The board is now in executive session.